I will call to order the March 12th meeting of the Verona Economic Council. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Gaskell.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. Next we have public comment. If there's anyone that wishes to speak this evening, we would ask that you would please come forward to the podium. There should be a sign up sheet there. We'd ask you'd sign that sheet, and not only for our benefit, but for those watching at home, if you would state your name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name's Ray Yunker. I was here, I think last June, you looked at your CR zoning ordinance at request of a resident. And I had spoke at that time, and I came back now as an applicant, asking to have you take a look at the CR zoning from a slightly different angle than before. We purchased Hometown Grove last year and are now constructing homes and are open for sales. We also operate in several other communities, DeForest, Sun Prairie, Fitchburg, Sussex, and Madison itself. We believe that affordable housing is a part, an important part, of all of our jobs, and without an array of affordable housing in our communities, we have a shaky foundation, for sure. Having said that, CR zoning in Verona was designed to try and promote that, and I don't, I think everyone, when they look at the numbers and figures, will start to see that it's not achieving its intended goal. So what we're looking to do is just expand the size a little bit, because our customers that are coming to us are asking us for more size, more amenities. People are working from home now. They tend to have, they want to have an office, or even an office and a playroom. And those are the sorts of things that are just really difficult to squeeze into the current 1,600, 1,900 square foot sizes. Also, they want the higher end materials and that sort of stuff, which is also driving up costs. What we're seeing is frankly, people aren't asking us for the 1,200 square foot home. When I started in real estate in 1989, that was kind of the average new home. The average new home is 2,000 to 2,400 square feet, most of them costing well over $400,000. And one of the things you'll see, I think, in your package is, for us, the actual cost of a customer's home per square foot drops from almost $260 a square foot to almost $188 a square foot, just by increasing the size. There are economies of scales as the houses get bigger. So in a way, the size restriction actually makes the housing look less affordable when compared to other parts of the county. And the difference is usually not that much. If you're talking about, from the raising it up, from where it is now to the highest, it's only a difference in income of about $5,000 to $7,000 annual, a year, $132 a month. Couple of things, some have suggested that CR residents that own a home now just move up, and that creates more affordable housing, but that's really like a tax of somewhere between $25,000 and $35,000, because they got to pay a real estate agent, all their closing costs, and all that other kind of stuff. And I think that's really not what you're trying to do. I think there are solutions. One other suggestion was that we're restricted on what we can build for the customer, but then the customer could make it bigger, which also seems counterintuitive, because we all know that if you remodel something, it costs probably 150% of what it would've cost to do at the beginning. So we're looking for, you know, both a little flexibility in the CR zoning, and then also, we believe there are options. I don't know that they fit in single-family housing anymore. We're looking at probably two townhome communities we'll be doing in this, not in Verona at this time, but possibly in the future. And I think those are the kinds of ways to get your housing costs closer to the median, because we're well over $100,000 away from them, even at our smallest house, pretty much. In conclusion, I would like to ask you to consider our request for the size change. As I've stated in the last meeting, I'll state now, I believe that affordable housing is an important part of our community fabric, and I would volunteer my time to work with you all to come up with solutions. Probably doesn't work in our current development since the roads are in, but we would be more than happy to do that. It's been very, I've been successful at it in other communities, and I would love to do it here. So if at the time you consider you have any questions, I will be available during your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on their public comment? Please come forward.
I live at 110 Lincoln Street with my family. This is in regards to the 102, 104 potential approval about this three-story building with 90 units. We've been here, this is, I think, our third time up to bat for this situation. We'd like to sort of continue to talk to the board about the same thing, and that is the issues with traffic. We've lived here since 2000, and you've got the Verona Area Theater Company that's just been built not too far ago, traffic coming up and down the street, three seasons of the year, four, lots and lots of traffic of people that don't even live here, park up and down the streets, as well as the EMT department, you've got the police department, very, very busy area. We moved here back in 2000 because this was and is supposed to be a hometown, and it's been turned into a city very quickly, and it's very sad to see. With most people, I think, who are long-term residents here, with this being an established area, I believe moved here because it's just far enough out from the Madison area to be not too far from work or for commute, but it still has that nice hometown feel of being out in the country. It's a huge concern, it's a great worry, and I really hope that people will consider, I don't know whether, still whether there has even been a traffic plan done, it may or may not have been, I don't know, but I know that we live here and we see it all the time. And I hope that the board will just really consider very carefully that many of the people that live here, been here for many, many years, and it's not necessarily about change as such, it's how it affects everybody else, and it's the people that have to live here. And I really hope that the board will consider very carefully about whether they approve or whether they don't approve this particular three-story building with, has 90 apartments, which is probably about 200 people potentially with cars all moving into this street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone else, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Joyce Freysinger, and I live in this neighborhood, and I'd like to comment again on the proposed apartment complex on Lincoln Street here. I know Verona is growing, and a lot of people live here. I do believe that this building is really way too big for the neighborhood, for the intersection, the way traffic flows. I'm not sure if a traffic study's been done, but if you could see it in the summertime with all of the sports going on at the park, it's, the street is parked up. And I just can't imagine even 100 more cars coming to the intersection, which dead ends at Culvers and splits both ways, or they would have to come back through our neighborhoods. And with that much activity at the parks, and then with the fire department there and the new theater, I really believe it would be a big mistake, and it's going to be hard to undo it once it's done. I also, I live just right down the bike path from where this is. I see what it will do to, is it Jefferson Street, where people's backyards will be right up against this. It'll ruin their neighborhood. I believe that it's going to cause more problems than you can see right now. There's a lot of water runoff problems in our neighborhood. With this size of building, it's really going to increase the flow in that canal, and it's already flooding people's basements in this neighborhood. I really hope you'll consider the enormous effect that this is going to have on the neighborhood. I believe in growth, I believe in multiple unit buildings, I think it's a good idea not to just sprawl out into the country, but this corner where this building is proposed, I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on their public comment?
I'm Richard Novak. I live at 110 Lincoln Street, right across the street. I'm here for, I see all the different things going on throughout the year. It seems like about every two weeks in the summertime, there's always events, that's not including soccer practices, but there's mud runs and just, there's festivals, a couple festivals, people getting married up at the pavilion here. It's, there's just a huge amount. And with putting this big building right there, it's not going to help the situation, it's going to make it a lot worse. People that are for it don't live in this area. If they lived here, they would understand. If you put this thing up, this monstrosity, not only are you going to have water problems, but you have the police department right here, and with all the things going on, they're not going to be able to get out and get back really quick. It's going to increase the cost and increase the time, the response time for people getting it to where they need to go. And it's going to probably make it so you're going to have to move the police department, because it's really going to affect this neighborhood. You're going to really destroy a part of Verona by doing this. Once you do it, you can't undo it. And I really hate to see something of this size. I mean, yes, have a, you know, a couple houses or something like that, but not a big apartment complex. It's just, it's just going to really make things awkward for everyone here, and slow things down to a snail. Have you thought about putting this thing, because the other side of Verona has a lot of open spot, and it's a lot closer to Epic, which is, seems to be where y'all want to house a lot of people, or for them. Just a thought, but this is really, I've been here for 18 years now, and you're going to really destroy this portion of Verona. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak, you can start working your way forward. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm not seeing anyone, so we're going to proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the February 26th meeting. Those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure?
Who approves?
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and the minutes are approved. Next we have discussion and possible action regarding approving an appointment to fill a vacancy on the city council. I mentioned at prior meetings that Alderperson Doyle and I had conversations prior to Christmas, and we said what we would do is wait until after the filing deadline, and if there was a single candidate that took papers out for that position, then our recommendation would be that we would appoint that candidate, and that is the situation where we're in. So Mr. Chad Kemp is with us this evening. We're going to swear him in. Chad, if you can work your way up here. And we had conversations with Chad early on as well, and he had prior commitments through the beginning of March. So that's why we are making the appointment tonight. The recommendation comes from Alderperson Doyle and myself. Chad, why don't you come right up here?
Aye, Chad Kemp.
Having been appointed to the office of District One Alderperson.
Having been appointed to the office of District Alder, District Person Alder One. Sorry. Close enough.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll have him sign this one.
What we should have done, speak closer, is we should have had a motion and a second to officially make the appointment, because the appointment comes from the council. So we did the swearing in before we actually had the motion, but I think you're going to be safe. But just okay, let's, how about, is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Touche. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderperson.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. So welcome, Alderperson Kemp. We've gotten to know each other over the last couple of years, and I wish I would have more than one month to work with you, but we can still talk, right? And we've gotten to be friends, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, we're moving to mayor's business, and I would like to make committee appointments due to the vacancies of the position and the committees where Mr. McGilvery had served. So I'm just, for, at this point, I would ask for your confirmation of appointments for Mr. Kemp, Alderperson Kemp, for the Finance Committee, Public Works Sewer and Water, and the Senior Center Committee. Do I have a motion to that effect? We have a motion by Ms. Doyle.
Yep.
And a second? Seconded by Mr. Diaz. All those in favor of confirming the appointments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Chad, it's time to get to work.
Definitely. Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to move then, Alderperson Kemp. I'm going to offer you an opportunity to say any words, if you'd like to.
Yes, well, I first, I just look forward to working with everyone here and working for the community. You know, I appreciate everyone here and the time that they take. I know what it's like to take that time away from your family, and I only, you know, hope to serve and work diligently with all of you. I personally would like to take an opportunity to thank the mayor for his service. He's been, you know, here for a while. I actually went to high school with his daughter, so I've known him for quite some time, and I do know most of the people, but I look forward to working with everyone here. And, you know, I just, I just look forward to getting down to work and doing the city's business. Thank you.
Thank you. He just had to get that in, that he went to high school with my daughter.
Right, yeah.
That's all right, and she thinks very highly of you as well, so. With that, we're going to move to announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? Mr. Steiner, please.
Just a reminder that the 14th, this Wednesday, we have our second candidate forum at the Senior Center at 6:00 PM. And please come and listen to our candidates, and there's probably be an opportunity to ask them questions and get to know them a little bit better. And for all the Irish people, Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any additional announcements this evening?
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, please.
I sent out a doodle poll last week for Board of Review. We do need to decide on that date. It looks like most people can attend on Monday, May 21st. However, I know for Liz, it's difficult for you to get here by 5:00 or even 5:30. Oh, really? So I'm asking for some sort of consensus on the 21st and possibly a time. Is 7:00 o'clock too late for everyone? Okay. Then I will schedule with the assessor for May 21st, Monday, May 21st, 7:00 to 9:00 PM then for the Board of Review. Also, Kayla Martin has accepted our offer for the deputy clerk position, and she'll be starting on March 20th, which I'm very excited about. Kayla has a lot of office experience, and I think she'll be a great addition not only to the clerk's office specifically, but to the administration department in general, so we're looking forward to that. Last but not least, just so you can mark your calendars, the Hometown Days Parade will be on Sunday, June 3rd. Parade lineup is at 10:30 AM.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any additional announcements? Any additional announcements? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move on then to reports. We'll begin with the administrator's report. Mr. McCorskey, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates for council. The Fitchverona EMS Commission will be meeting Thursday night, that's this coming Thursday night, March 15th, at 7:00 o'clock at the fire station. And the Joint City Town Planning Commission will be meeting Monday, March 19th, at the Verona Town Hall, that's also at 7:00. So wanted to update you on those two calendar dates. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. McCorskey? Any questions? Not seeing any. Engineer's report. Ms. Fisher, please.
Thank you. On March 9th, Mr. Montpass sent the engineer's report, and everyone should have received that, but just to review some of the projects that are now under contract, the 2018 pavement rehab project and the 2018 Seal Coat project, those contracts have been returned to the city for review and signature. And for the downtown streets reconstruction phase two, that's South Schuman Street and West Park Lane, and the city parking lot reconstruction, which would be the old library, the new library, and the senior center, the contracts have been returned to the city for review and signature, and a pre-construction conference will be scheduled for the week of March 19th, which is next week.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Fisher? Any questions? Thank you much for being here and filling in for Mr. Montpass. We will then move to committee reports. Finance Committee, Mr. Linder, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $890,266.60.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
There was two larger one. One is $441,000. It was 2,013 bond issues for principal and interest, and then $91,000 for well six, that's part of TIF six, and a ped bike study to AECOM.
Thank you, Ms. Linder. Further questions for the committee or for staff? Any questions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in an amount totaling $890,266.60. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 11A2. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-18-003, approving redemption of the state trust fund loan and utilization of TID 5 and TID 7 residual funds.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
I don't know if I have that on my sheet.
Mr.?
Oh, here it is. Okay. We're recommending the use of debt service funds in addition to TID 5 and TID 7 residual unallocated funds to redeem a 2015 state trust fund loan with a balance of $271,203.62. This loan was used to purchase a former Verona Area Community Theater building on Brew Street to early redemption. Six years earlier, the loan will save the city approximately $34,200 in interest.
Any questions for the committee or for staff? Any questions? Seeing none, the motion is to approve Resolution Number R-18-003. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Anything else in the Finance Committee?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Parks Recreation Forestry Commission, Ms. Ricky, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with MSA Professional Services for an amended Fireman's Park master plan.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Steiner. Ms. Ricky, please.
In 2016, MSA provided the Parks and Recreation Committee a Fireman's Park master plan as part of the city's updated comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. The Parks and Recreation Committee approved a recommended revised version of the master plan at their February 21st, 2018 meeting, and are recommending approval by the council. The master plan identifies an approximate $2,700,000 construction plan for Fireman's Park improvements. The new MSA service agreement is for design, construction documents, bidding, and construction management for a total cost of $297,000, including contingencies. The approximate total cost for improvements to Fireman's Park would be $3150,000.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. Questions for the commission or for staff? We have David and Casey here in the back. Any questions for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a professional services agreement with MSA, professional services for an amended Fireman's Park master plan. All those, I'm sorry, Mr. Linder.
Can I just say something quick?
Go ahead.
We talked about this in the Finance Committee meeting. Lot of this money we had earmarked for water feature, and in the past, we've talked about some other options. This is our best option at the moment. The old, the building currently at the Fireman's Park is in really rough shape, and this would definitely make a big improvement on it. The plan looks really, really nice. My family uses the beach, and it's, I think it can be a really big, a good jewel for the city. I think this is a good idea to use this money at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, please.
I'd just like to add, part of our discussion at the Finance Committee was that this isn't an either/or option when it comes to Fireman's Park or a pool in the future. It's just especially in light of not having a viable pool site at this time. It was always in our plan to make some sort of improvements, as Alder Linder brought up, to Fireman's Beach, so this is a good opportunity to do so without having to take on too great of additional borrowing and utilizing funds that we already have set aside for an aquatic feature. So we're definitely open to exploring sites for a community pool in the future, but for now, we definitely want to make sure we're taking care of the parcels and parks that we already have.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. And in addition, this would allow us to get working on the project this next coming year ready, rather than any delay. Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to agree with some of the previous comments. I think this has, this site has potential to be like a really great reinvigorated site. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna, uh, agree with some of the previous comments. I think this has, the, this site has potential to be like a really great reinvigorated city park, and I think it's wonderful and, um, I, I, I think it could even be, you know, a potential site for, for fests or other events, food carts, things like that. So I'm, I'm glad we're doing this.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Ms. Ricky, anything else in Parks Recreation and Forestry?
No, that's everything.
Thank you. We'll move then to Planning Commission. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you. The first item is resolution eighteen dash zero-zero-four approving a certified survey map to create one lot at one-sixteen Paoli Street. In May of twenty-seventeen, the city and the owner of the property at one-sixteen Paoli Street entered into a development agreement to allow a single-family home to be constructed. As part of the agreement, proper, the property owner was required to relocate a water line and complete a certified survey map. No additional lots are being created with the CSM, and the CSM will satisfy the requirements of the development agreement. The planning commission voted five to zero to recommend for the approval of the certified survey map.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. You've heard the explanation. Mr. Diaz, please.
I move approval of resolution R-dash-eighteen dash zero-zero-four approving a certified survey map to create one lot at one-sixteen Paoli Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second? Seconded by, uh, seconded by Mr. Linder. Questions, comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of resolution number R-dash-one-eight dash zero-zero-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you. Next item is resolution R-dash-eighteen dash zero-zero-five approving a conditional use permit amendment at one-twenty Enterprise Drive. Tanya's Big House for Kids is requesting a conditional use permit amendment to modify the conditions of their two-thousand-and-three conditional use permit. The applicant is requesting to remove the cap of the number of children allowed to be enrolled at the facility from one-hundred-and-sixteen to one-hundred-and-fifty, and to allow an outdoor play area on the north side of the building. The planning commission held the required public hearing on March fifth of twenty-eighteen and voted five to zero to recommend for the approval of the conditional use permit amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Diaz, please.
I understand from public comment there were some issues that came up with the site. Could you elaborate on them?
Mr. Sayer, please.
I think the two items that I can recall off the top of my head were the concerns about potential noise from the facility, uh, noise related to the outdoor play of the, the children. And the second concern was regarding some of the, the screening be, behind the property as, as well and just, you know, uh, what's back there.
Mr. Diaz.
Have you checked the landscaping to make sure it's still intact and up to the, uh, originally agreed to standards?
Staff has not checked that, partially because we decided we'd have to go around to private property, and that was part of the reason why we, we hadn't and just, I think partially too because the planning commission didn't raise that concern. That was something the, the owner offered to install additional arboretis and the planning commission didn't make that requirement, so staff didn't ex- explore it for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comments, potential motions? Mr. Linder, please.
Um, Mr. Sayer would, in order to get those arboretis, we need to include that in there or do you feel that they'll take care of it?
If you're concerned about it, you could put a condition on there. The applicant shall install a reasonable, a reasonable amount of arboretis as approved by the, by the city planning department.
Okay.
Mr. Linder, please.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-dash-one-eight dash zero-zero-five approving a conditional use, um, permit amendment at one-twenty Enterprise Drive with the condition that the landscaping is approved by the city planning department.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Steiner. Questions or comments on that motion? Mr. Diaz, please.
I just wanna say thank you to the applicant for installing the extra landscaping. It's, it's good when people try to work with the city and with their neighbors.
Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Tanya's daycare has been an awesome neighbor for the people on Knoll Way. They have worked with us on many other issues that didn't need to come here. They are, they are good amenity for the city. They work well with the children, and what they're doing for the mighty mites is a step in the right direction to keep them in Verona for a very long time. This is a good situation.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. I would just add that in all the years I've been involved on the council, I have not heard one negative thing about that facility. They do great work. Any other questions on the motion? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve resolution number R-dash-one-eight dash zero-zero-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you. The next item is resolution R-dash-eighteen dash zero-zero-six approving a conditional use permit to allow a group development at four-oh-four Legion Street. The proposed conditional use permit would allow for the construction of an eight-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot building at four-oh-four Legion Street. There is an existing building on the property today. The planning commission held the required public hearing on March fifth of twenty-eighteen and voted five to zero to recommend for the approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Mr. Linder, please.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-dash-one-eight dash zero-zero-six approving a conditional use permit to allow group development at A, at four-oh-four Legion Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Steiner. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of resol- approval of resolution number R-dash-one-eight dash zero-zero-six signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you. The next item is resolution R-dash-eighteen dash zero-zero-seven approving a general development plan to be located at one-oh-two, one-oh-four Lincoln Street that would allow for the construction of ninety multifamily units. The proposed general development plan, GDP, would allow for the construction of ninety multifamily units at one-oh-two, one-oh-four Lincoln Street. The planning commission held the required public hearing on March fifth of twenty-eighteen. Comments from the planning commission included appreciation towards the developer for making changes to the project and compliments on the design of the building. The planning commission voted five to zero to recommend for the approval of the GDP.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, potential motions? Ms. Doyle, please.
Mr. Sayer, would you mind speaking to the traffic analysis that's been done for this site?
Mr. Sayer.
Yes, so as part of the project, we did send this, uh, development off to our traffic engineer, Jess Billmeyer, at, at AECOM. Jess did complete a, a, a brief analysis of just the amount of traffic from the project. Uh, that one-page memo was included in, in the council packet. It was also provided to the planning commission as well. Uh, the, the short of it from, from Jess's standpoint, from Mr. Billmeyer's standpoint was, uh, he doesn't have any concerns with the traffic from the development. The, the street is sized and, uh, the, the traffic signals are, are appropriate to handle it. I think the one comment he had regarding potential changes with this happening would be to, uh, look at the timing of the signals at Lincoln and Verona Avenue. Uh, just possibly modify the timing of the signals. From what, what Jess has in, in the, in his report, um, he says overall the development will generate a little more than one trip every two minutes. And that's based upon his analysis of, um, using the manuals that are in place at, at ninety units. He said the current volume in East Verona Avenue is about twelve-thousand vehicles per day and ninety-five daily trips, which is about five percent of total traffic on Lincoln Street. So i- i- in, in general, he didn't have any concerns with it at all. The only comment he had related towards it was just in the timing of the traffic signal at, at Lincoln.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Ms. Gasco, please.
Mr. Sayer, could you please reiterate the unit mix and also the number of underground parking stalls and surface lot stalls that'll be provided?
Yes.
Mr. Sayer.
So the unit mix is twenty-seven efficiency studios. Uh, there would be forty-one-bedroom units and then twenty-three two-bedroom units. That adds up to ninety units. Uh, the parking on the site itself, they have ninety underground parking spaces. And at the surface, they will have... I'm getting there. Bear with me, please. On the surface, they will have sixty surface parking, parking spaces. So the toll on the site is one-fifty.
Thank you, and that meets city standards, yes?
Well, that's an exemption as part of the planned development process. Um, so that would be an exemption that would have to be granted as part of the GDP process. Typically, as we look at these, our, our first initial concern is always looking at the underground, making sure that there is at least one space per unit. Uh, and then we look at what's actually on the surface. As we looked at this site, we looked at the other projects we have in the city that includes, uh, uh, the Knoll Manor area, also looking at the west end. And the ratios that the applicant is requesting is, is consistent with what we have elsewhere in the city. I'm not aware of any issues in the west end or those other areas. So we're, we're comfortable with what they're proposing today.
Just as, as a follow-up on the parking, Mr. Sayer, um, I'm trying to think, we see so many different plans. Did the applicant also talk about that there was the potential to add spots if necessary in the future?
Yeah, they, correct. They, they do have the potential to add, add, uh, additional parking. On their site plan, they have fourteen spaces shown on there where they could add parking if it was an issue. They also have some open space north of the site as well, so if it was a major problem, they, they have sufficient space, they could add parking. So if it becomes a problem, they can always come back and add that parking. Um, we don't think it would be, but if it is, there is space on the site, and that's a good point.
Mr. Diaz and then Mr. Kemp.
Thank you. I just wanna say I'm opposed to this development. I share the concerns of the neighbors about water runoff, um, the concerns about traffic, especially when you factor in the fact we have the fire department and EMS right there, and I'm worried about response times. Um, I, I appreciate the work the developers done, meeting with people, and I think that's great, but I, I just don't think this development is, is a good fit for the neighborhood, and I plan to vote against it.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp, please.
Uh, Mr. Sayer, could you please, uh, just, I, I do have some concerns, and I am new to the, to the council, but I have some concerns about some of the issues that the community was speaking about with respect to water. What efforts have the city put into, you know, researching that specifically?
Mr. Sayer.
So for any, any project, there is a stormwater management plan that is required, so the applicant would have onsite stormwater as required by, by, by city ordinances. So generally, currently, there is, there is no stormwater on the site. There's a, you've got the Seacor property and a couple buildings on the, on the site. And as you go west, you have just a, basically a, a field. So as part of this project, obviously, they would need to grade the site and to make the water go where it needs to go. And part of that would be, would be going to the pond that would be on the property. We do have the, the channel that runs south of the site and, um, actually runs behind City Hall here as well, too. Uh, the city has been making some improvements to that channel as well. We did made some improvements last year behind City Hall here to improve the channel. Uh, we're also looking at additional improvements and potentially looking at a regional stormwater facility in this area that would help this property and help the entire downtown area as well, too. I think as we've looked at this site, the city engineer has not raised any concerns or issues with regards to stormwater. It would meet all the code requirements as designed right now initially as we've looked at it. Typically with these projects as well, we have a, a, a four-step in the process called the precise implementation plan. Uh, that's the PIP. Uh, that's, to be quite honest with you, that's where we really dive into the stormwater plan. As part of that, they have to submit a stormwater management plan. Uh, we don't have that right now because it's still in the general development plan. But if this were to be approved, maybe the developer does go forward, that's something they would create as part of their project is the master stormwater plan for, for the site itself. But as it, as it stands right now, staff doesn't have any concerns with it. I think initially we believe that water and drainage could be, possibly be improved as part of this, just because you'll have a pond in place and the site will be graded properly as well, too.
Any follow-ups, Mr. Kemp? No, thank you. Hey, Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my stance on this has not changed. I still believe that this property would be great for single-family development, uh, lots with a nice home on it. And it would fit more with what those folks live with down in that neighborhood. And, uh, that water issue, I don't need to beat a dead horse, but I'm very concerned about that, too. And the even bigger one I'm concerned about is the traffic that is on Lincoln. We have emergency vehicles going up and down there. We don't need to add a hundred-and-sixty more cars or vehicle traffic coming in and out of a property. And I, I really, the people who live there now have told me they, they do not want their way of life to change. They are very happy living in Verona, and why not let them develop and, or maybe get them to change their minds and lot it out, put up a nice house? Uh, you probably get several houses in there. I don't know the number, but they'd be happy to have new neighbors that way, not the way that's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Further questions, comments? Motions? Ms. Ricky, please.
I just have a question about the, the drainage and stormwater management. If, um, it is, it does not seem likely that they would be able to avoid flooding for the underground parking in a hundred-year storm event at the point of the precise implementation plan, then can, um, can we not approv- approve it at that point?
Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, I, that, that, you know, that comment came from the, the city engineer who, uh, isn't here. Carlo is filling in for the city engineer, so I, I can't speak to the precise details behind the basis of that comment. So that one, that one, I'm not prepared to answer tonight. I'm sorry.
I can say because I, I review, I review a lot of the stormwater management plans, so there is a freeboard requirement. There has to be at least a foot, um, bef- uh, between, and the lowest opening of a building and the hundred-year storm. So that's definitely something that we look at, and we kick back stormwater management plans all the time if they don't meet city ordinance. And they have to meet city ordinance in order to get a permit. So I guess to answer your question, they wouldn't be permitted to build the project without getting that approved.
Any follow-up, Ms. Ricky?
No, I just, I am concerned about the traffic and the, the stormwater management as well.
Any other questions, comments, or motions? Ms. Gasco, please.
I would just encourage everyone to read the actual traffic analysis that was provided because it's pretty explicit about the impact of the traffic. And to think about, I, I am making an assumption here, but prior to the culvers going into that location, I assume that people are probably fairly concerned about traffic generated by culvers, and I think that intersection handles it fine. So I would encourage, and certainly anyone who in the public needs this, contact Mr. Sayer, but the traffic impacts, as calculated, and this is his job, are pretty minimal.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle, please.
To add to that, part of the reason why it was a, a sort of abbreviated traffic analysis for the site is this was already analyzed for a multifamily development in our two-thousand-and-twelve, um, downtown mobility plan. So that was the plan for, what, six years now for this site? So that's part of why this was just an additional analysis on top of what had already been done six years ago.
Thank you. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, spent a lot of time thinking about this one. In the January meeting, we talked, I talked about how the developer came to make a lot of changes that, uh, I thought were positive changes to the property. But I, as I stated in January, I'm not convinced it's the right spot for this location, and I, I really haven't changed my mind. I'm not just concerned about the traffic. I'm just concerned about this location with, next to the neighborhood, uh, a lot of units. And, uh, so I, I think we can do better. It's my personal opinion, so I will be voting no.
Other questions, comments, motions? Mr. Touche?
My two cents here. Um, I agree with a lot of you. It's, I think, as I said last time this came, I don't think it's the right fit for the neighborhood. Lots of concerns have come up. It's, it's actually hard to say no, but other than, for me, it's fit. And I also think the neighborhood in that area has water issues, and changing it even more can exacerbate the issue. So I think, um, I will also be voting no for this.
Questions, comments, motions? Ms. Doyle, please.
For the sake of moving things along, I will make a motion to approve resolution number R-dash-eighteen dash zero-zero-seven, um, approving a general development plan to be located at one-oh-two slash one-oh-four Lincoln Street that would allow for the construction of ninety multifamily units.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gasco. Questions, comments? Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, the motion is to approve resolution number R-dash-one-eight dash zero-zero-seven approving the general development plan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Nay.
No.
I ask for a show of hands. All those in favor? We have three in favor and five opposed. The motion fails. Okay, we are, uh, Mr. Sayer, we are on agenda item eleven-five. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The next item is ordinance number eighteen dash nine-one-one, amending section- The next item is Ordinance Number 18-911, Amending Section 13-1-47, Pren C, Pren 2H of the City's zoning ordinance relating to the maximum living space requirements of the community residential zoning district. The proposed text amendment would modify the maximum living space requirements of the CR zoning district. The ordinance currently caps the maximum living space for houses, Zone CR, at sixteen-hundred square feet for a single-story dwelling and nineteen-hundred square feet for a two-story dwelling. The square footages of CR-zoned homes are measured by reviewing the areas of the first and second floors of the home. Basements and garages are not included in the square footage calculation. The proposed amendment would cap a single-story home at eighteen-hundred square feet and a two-story home at two-thousand-two-hundred square feet. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on March 5th of 2018. Comments from the Plan Commission included a desire by some members to remove the entire district. One member not in favor of repealing the cap, but supportive of modifying the cap, and one member opposed to any change to the requirement. The Plan Commission voted four to one to recommend for the approval of the zoning text amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Questions, comments, motions? Mr. Linder, please.
Questions first. So, trying to, you know, Mr. Younger, I believe he was, was talking about cost per square foot and how it could be quite a bit different if this was slightly bigger. I guess I didn't quite understand all that because it seemed pretty dramatic. I don't know if you have any information on that, Mr. Sayer?
Mr. Sayer.
I think the point Mr. Younger was trying to get to is that on a cost basis on per square foot, as the kind of the law of scales, I guess, as you look at it, was, you know, a larger home, if you say it's two thousand square feet versus fifteen-hundred square feet, some of the basic costs are always going to be there. I mean, you're building out certain things, certain features regardless, and adding the extra square footage doesn't really have a dramatic impact on, you know, the costs might be more, but as you look at it from a regular basis on a per-square-foot basis, it's actually more because there's always certain things you're going to have to build out. I think that was his point. I think the second point he was trying to make was, too, is as you do additions in the future, the cost to add on is going to be more just because when you're building a house, it's always cheaper to save, if you want it, throw a few extras in there. It's just an add-on at that point, and the house is open, and it's easier to add that on now versus trying to do an addition later on. Typically, it just will cost more than it would if you wanted to add that square footage initially.
So, an eighteen-hundred-square-foot home, which is what the proposed amendment would do, is not very more, very much more expensive than a sixteen-hundred-square-foot home? Is that the gist of it?
I don't know about that. I'm not gonna, I mean, I think to his point, I think the point being is that as you look at a cost on a per-square-foot basis, I think, and as the staff looked at this a year ago, what we found was that, when you look at the CR-zoned homes, they're priced less, they're lower than NR-zoned homes. We have two zoning districts. We have CR and NR. The CR homes are costing less, but as you look, break that down further and look at the square footages of the home, what we found were that the CR homes are either the same or slightly more per square foot than the NR homes, and that's just the basis of what we were finding in sales data, and that could be a function of demand. It could be a function of maybe different features in houses, but there's an indication that the CR homes are costing more per square foot than the NR homes.
So, is there, so changing it from, so the idea behind the sixteen-hundred-square-foot CR zoning was to make a different choice in houses, making a less expensive home, correct? Is that the?
Mr. Sayer.
So, the intent, and I'll just read it from the city's comprehensive plan, in 2000, the city of Verona created the community residential zoning district in an attempt to promote affordable, single-family detached housing in the city. The CR zoning district attempted to reduce costs of the two basic components of single-family homes, land price and building price. Specifically, the community residential zoning district, A, allows parcels twenty-five percent smaller for single-family houses than required in the standard, single-family zoning district, and that's six thousand square-foot lots versus eight thousand square-foot lots in the NR district. And two, it imposes a maximum building size for houses built on CR lots. I don't know, to be quite honest with you, I don't know how the sixteen-hundred, how that number was derived versus, you know, what he's requesting to amend it tonight. I'm not sure how that we got to the sixteen-hundred. I haven't seen any background on that information, but that was the intent, to provide more affordable-type housing.
And do you feel that that's working, not working? Because I think the data you gave us at one point, I don't have in front of me, but the, you know, CR homes were considerably less than the NR.
Yeah. What you have in the city right now is you have supply and demand, and basically, demand is outstripping supply. So, no, it's not working. Is it creating houses that cost less than NR houses? Yes. I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it affordable by any means, but I would say it is less expensive housing than you have in a typical NR-zone lot. So, is it working to create affordable housing, in my opinion? No. But there's also functions that go into affordability that simply isn't just a price of a house. But with that said, I mean, it is, it is creating lots that cost less. You could argue that, there's houses that cost less. You could argue that lot price is starting to drive that, just because it's a smaller lot, so the price of the lot would be, should be relatively lower, but the counter to that is obviously Middleton Hills, which obviously has some of the highest values in Dane County. But I would say definitely it is creating less expensive housing.
That's fair enough, so that's, I didn't use the right word, but so less expensive housing compared to the NR. And if we increase it to eighteen-hundred and go from eighteen-hundred to sixteen, eighteen-hundred, and then two stories, nineteen to twenty-two-hundred, that difference in cost would decrease. It'd be, I mean, right, I mean, you're saying so.
Mr. Sayer.
I would think it would, you know, the price would probably come up a little bit, potentially, because you're adding two hundred additional square feet. The cost per foot might get closer to the NR cost per square foot.
So, my guess, my, just overall, if the goal was to create less expensive housing, it sounds like it's doing that. If we increased to eighteen-hundred, we're not doing that as much as we have currently. Even though demand is saying they want people on more, bigger houses, there may be an advantage to still having some smaller houses and lots in the city.
Mr. Sayer.
Not really a question, I don't think. You're welcome to respond.
My response on this was from a year ago. I was in support of, obviously, repealing the requirement altogether. I think that it hasn't served the purpose and the intent of the city. There might be better options out there that the city should be looking at, and that we're having conversations, obviously, with the Regional Planning Commission on a housing study. I think once we have that study back this summer, that might be helpful as well, too. I think this requirement places in some situations an unnecessary challenge on property owners. I mean, this is typically something people don't expect when they buy houses of, they call, they get their building permit, and we say, "No, sorry, you're already capped out at sixteen-hundred square feet." It's unfortunate when we turn people away, and I think the challenge to that is if you have a growing family, or whatever your family situation may be, it's hard to tell someone to say, "Well, the intent of this was starter housing in the city. Now, you either have to move someplace." And it's hard to say move someplace when you look at some of the housing prices out there, and they're high. It's not cheap to live in the city. I mean, there's, it can be challenging, especially if someone has a family situation and they need to put an addition on. So, I don't, I don't think it's worked myself. I think, I think the attempt is valiant. I think it was a good attempt back in 2000. I think it just, it just, it hasn't worked, and it's, obviously, I still support repealing it entirely, but I think this is a fair compromise if, if the council's interested in some flexibility with it.
Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I think it's worked very well. I think we have groups of people moving into our city that would not have any idea what it's going to cost, but they couldn't get enough money to buy a bigger home. Down the road, they could add more money and make it a little better, or buy another house in the city and sell the smaller home. I think we need to make sure that we have affordable homes for a certain faction of people that want to move to Verona, but maybe don't have the $200,000 job. And I think it's working pretty good. I live in one of those houses, and I love it. Have I made changes to the house? No. I've grown old in the house, and I'm glad it's what it is. And I think we need more of it, actually, all around the city. There's people that would love to be here. They have children, too, you know? And supporting every level is important. And I'm not, I'm against this. Let's keep it what it is, because I think it's working very well. Does it cause some chaos to people, maybe, that want to get a bigger house, or for the builders? Yeah, maybe. The cost is always going to be there. But from a personal point of view, I'm a success story, and I could afford it. I moved here, and I'm paying sixteen dollars a day to live here, you know, just property taxes. That means my house is worth $5,500 a year. I pay in property taxes. Is sixteen dollars a day affordable? You betcha, even for a retired guy. So, I hope that we can keep this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Ms. Gaskill, please.
Thank you. My preference would be to revisit this once we have the housing study back. It's one of the only things we have in place right now to even attempt affordable housing. I would also add that I think the comparison to Middleton Hills is not quite accurate. That was a planned development as such, and all of the money in Middleton Hills generally is in that house. So, to compare that to what we've got going here in Verona, I don't think is an accurate assessment.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
I agree. I have the same thoughts. I would like to see the housing study before we make any dramatic changes to zoning that might have an impact on affordability. And again, in this context, it's less expensive. You know, the numbers we have here in our packet are what, NR sales median are 406, your mean is 390, versus CR sales of 314, versus 310. So, again, it's not affordable by any means, but it is less expensive. So, I'm all for revisiting this after seeing what more broad mechanisms the city can employ to actually create affordable housing.
Other comments? Ms. Riki, please.
I guess I'm, in general, in support of there being a wider variability in the possibilities for housing in the CR zoning districts, so that people were able to either add on or build slightly larger houses in the CR zone to begin with. But I would also like to see there, on the other end, be lower minimum lot sizes and lower minimum house sizes, so that there could be even broader variability and maybe even, you know, cater to people who can't afford that median right now, so that there would be more potential choices and options for people in the future. So, I guess that's, I'm not for or against.
Other comments? Mr., excuse me, Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what the developer had to say. It, I found it very surprising. It, what I hear is that there's demand for bigger homes, or the demand is bigger than for affordable homes. That's the message I got from what he had said earlier. I agree that we need to figure out how to have many options in the city for homes, whether it's affordable homes, whether it's big homes. I mean, clearly, there's demand. There's a lot of people that want to live here. I, you know, at this time, I'm actually inclined to try to make a motion to table this item until we hear back from CARPSY on a plan, and so that we can know more and be more educated. So, at this point, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table.
We could just do a no action?
No action?
Could just do no action.
All right. I prefer that.
My comments are going to be, and then I'll get to Mr. Diaz, was, just to explain a little bit, on the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission thought that this was a good compromise. Some of the Plan Commission members, including myself, would have supported a complete repeal, but I've heard from two people on the council so far, and maybe a third, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Touche's mouth, that, you know, possibly, we should wait, take another look at this after the study comes out. Doesn't do us any harm to wait on this one. So, if that's what the feeling of the body is. Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo Alder Riki's comments about, you know, more flexibility. I think that, I mean, on some level, you end up passing along any kind of restrictions you have on development, you end up passing those costs along, and I would like us to be, to be flexible, at least in some sense, and kind of like truly let the market, you know, in housing dictate what gets built. So, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to wait, just based on the stuff my colleagues have said, but I think we should maybe look at, at providing kind of like a good level of flexibility.
Ms. Doyle, please.
Just to speak to demand, and this is just purely anecdotal, but I doubt folks who are looking for very affordable housing, who aren't of broad financial means, are going to a developer to ask to build a house. So, I think we're kind of looking at a very self-selected, specific demand that's going and speaking to a developer about building a home. So, just throwing that out there to the conversation.
Any further comments? Otherwise, I'm going to ask if we have consensus that this come back to the body at a future date, and Mr. Sayer will let you work when that future date is. We have consensus? All right. No action? Mr. Sayer, Item 11-6, please.
The next item is Ordinance Number 18-912, Rezoning Stewart's Woods from Rural Agricultural to Public Institutional. The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone Stewart's Woods from the current zoning of Rural Agricultural, RA, to Public Institutional, PI. The PI zoning classification will match the future high schools zoning to the north. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on March 5th of 2018 and voted four to one to recommend for the approval of the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions at this point? Questions, comments, motions? Questions, comments? Mr. Linder, please.
Before we was doing, I, question, what was the, do you know why the no one? I didn't catch that part on the.
We have, we have one Plan Commissioner who hasn't supported the school, the school being located in this location from the start, and he still has opposition to locating a school, any school activities in this location.
Okay. I know what you're talking about.
And I'll just add, add to that, and it's been consistent on every vote that he has taken. Mr. Linder?
Sorry, I'm trying to find it. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 18-912, Rezoning Stewart's Woods from Rural Agricultural to Public Institutional.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gaskill. Mr. Linder, anything to add?
No.
You've heard the motion and the second. Are there questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Ordinance Number 18-0, excuse me, -18912. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution R-18-008, Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow for the Construction of a 65-foot-tall high school to be located in the West End, south of West End Circle. The proposed conditional use permit would allow for the construction of a 65-foot-tall high school. The zoning ordinance allows a maximum building height of 35 feet unless a conditional use permit is approved, allowing a building height greater than 35 feet. One comment from the Plan Commission included verification of the height of the apartments to the north of the school. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on March 5th of 2018 and voted four to one to recommend for the approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Questions, comments, motions? Mr. Diaz, please.
I move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, seconded by Mr. Steiner. Mr. Diaz, you're the author. Anything to add?
I think this is a good thing to do, and we should keep the process moving forward.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution Number R-18-008. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Sayer, please.
Okay. Last one. Resolution, next item is Resolution R-18-009, Approving a Certified Survey Map to Create Three Lots and One Outlet for the New High School to be Located in the West End, South of West Verona Avenue and West of South Nine-Mound Road. The proposed Certified Survey Map, CSM, would The proposed certified survey map, CSM, would create three lots and one outlot, dedicate lands for roadways, and dedicate land along Highway eighteen one fifty-one. Lot one of the CSM would be retained by the Urbach Trust. Lots two and three would contain the future high school facility, and outlot one would be created for a future roadway that could be, that could extend across US eighteen one fifty-one to Valley Road. The Plan Commission voted four to one to recommend for the approval of the CSM with the following conditions. One, prior to the city signing the CSM, the applicant shall obtain all signatures on the CSM, including VASD and the Urbach Trust. Two, the CSM shall be recorded prior to the issuance of building permits. And three, a new CSM or affidavit of correction shall be submitted for city review and approval that provides the names of the roadways identified on the CSM.
Thank you, Mister Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Mister Diaz, please.
I move approval of resolution R dash eighteen dash zero zero nine with the conditions outlined by Mister Sayers.
We have a motion by Mister Diaz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Kemp. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve resolution R dash one eight dash zero zero nine. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Anything else in Plan Commission?
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Sayer. We're moving then to old business. Mister McCorsky, if you would, please.
Thank you. This would be the discussion of possible action regarding costs associated with public roads, public right-of-ways, and potential property purchase for partnership with the, between the city of Verona and the Verona area school district regarding the development of new high school and property. City Council requested staff to develop in a revised term sheet that was provided to the school district on March second regarding the costs associated with those roads, public right-of-ways, and property. It included three options for the school district to review. A response was received from the school district on March ninth regarding the revised term sheet. Staff is prepared to discuss this, the school district's response in open or closed session.
Thank you, Mister McCorsky. Uh, Ms. Doyle, please.
For the sake of the public, I would like to hear the school district's response in open session, please.
Okay. Mister, I'm sorry, Mister Diaz?
I, I was just gonna echo and say I would also like to hear this in public. And, and for the benefit of the, the school district representatives here, I think it might give them insight into what people at the city level are thinking.
Mister Kleinmeyer, please.
So I think we've made some pretty good progress. As, as Mister McCorsky mentioned, the last time that we got together with the council, you had essentially approved three different options that dealt with a payment to the school district, got at the issues related to the Sugar Creek property, and also addressed issues related to the property that is currently owned by the Urbach Trust. And what we received back from the school district, they said that of those three options, they would actually select option three. And just for the benefit of everyone, option three is the proposal, and, and I should say that there's a little bit of a tweak, but I think it's something we can work with. Option three was the proposal where we said the city would make a payment to, to the school district of up to four million dollars. There was a payment schedule that was identified. Then we would, the, as part of the four, four million dollar payment, the Sugar Creek property would be conveyed from the school district to the city in as-is condition. And really what that means for the city is then, to the extent that there may be any issues with respect to demolition of the building, we're gonna be taking it, and we're gonna have to deal with those. And that's essentially the, one of the bases for the payment being four million as opposed to five million. And then we had also indicated that in previous correspondence or, or responses from the school district, they have been negotiating property acquisition from the Urbach Trust. I think part of that is what Adam had identified as part of the CSM process. We had agreed as part of our option to, to, to essentially sign a waiver saying that we would not go back to the, the property by, for the Urbach Trust and seek any type of recapture payments based on the fact that some of the, the improvements that are gonna be done will benefit that property in addition to the school district property. So what, what they said was, they would support option three, and just, I'm just gonna kind of go point by point. They, they understand that it's gonna be a payment of four million dollars in installments. They have some language in their, their response, I guess I'll just read it. We agree with this, and so we're not gonna have any problem with this concept. What, what they wanted to clarify is, you know, within our offer, we had talked about making payments at, at scheduled times. And essentially, there's a date that's identified, and then a certain amount of the construction would have to be completed. And what they want to clarify, and, and we agree with this, is that, and I'm just gonna read it, to clarify, VASD understands that these specified dates are not deadlines for percentage completion of work, and that payment will be made on or after specified dates upon the requisite showing of the applicable percentage completion of work. And really, we agree with that. I mean, we're not saying that you have to be done by that period of time. It's just a payment schedule. So we're okay with that. And they, I'm not gonna read entirely what they, word for word what they have on the Sugar Creek property, but they agree with the idea that, okay, as part of the four million dollar payment, it would be conveyed to the city in as-is condition. And, and, and what I would mention as, as we start going into this is, you know, if, again, as I mentioned, I think we've made some progress, actually some pretty significant progress. And, uh, you know, from a staff perspective, I think that we would envision is, once we get done with the meeting tonight and either, you know, sometime this week, would be a, a, a term sheet provided back to the school district that I think would incorporate some of the things that we have in our term sheet, option three, and the other, and then incorporating language issues that they've identified. For example, the sentence that I read regarding the, we're not identifying that work needs to be done by a specified date, so that we could come up with a document to send back to them, that hopefully everybody could agree with essentially all of the terminology within, within the document. When it comes to the, and so, so that, again, option three that we had provided to them dealt with three issues. The amount of the payment and the schedule, Sugar Creek property, and then the Urbach Trust property. And they've kind of amended the position that they want to have with respect to the Urbach Trust property. And I think from a, from a staff standpoint, you know, depending on how you react to some of the other things that they've said, this, this could be a spot where we could move in the direction that they're asking. And it's some, it's kind of consistent with one of the approaches that we took when we had the initial term sheet. And what they're saying for the Urbach property is, okay, we don't want that waiver anymore. They've had discussions with the Urbach Trust. The, the, the people who operate the Urbach Trust seem to understand that some of the improvements that are gonna be made for the high school project are in fact gonna benefit the ultimate development of that Urbach Trust property when it's developed. And so instead of a waiver, we would, and this would be an agreement that we ultimately would have with the Urbach Trust. But it would be, we, the city would kick in and make a payment on or before August first of twenty twenty, an additional five hundred thousand dollars. And what the city would be doing is it would then have the, an agreement in place with the Urbach Trust that would say, and we have to come up with whatever this trigger would be, but whenever that trigger for the Urbach Trust property is hit, then they're gonna pay us the five hundred thousand dollars. So one way to look at it is, if you, if you agree with this concept, we're effectively at, acting as a bank for a period of time, be, between August first, twenty twenty, and whenever we would receive pa, payment from the Urbach Trust. There's also a, a risk to the village that the property never actually develops, in which case we wouldn't get paid. And so that, I mean, there's, there's, it's not, there are, I would say, you know, some issues for the city to consider. But again, I, I think depending on what your reaction is to some of the other proposals that they've made, that's something that we could move in that direction, at least from the village staff's perspective. That...
Of course.
Hmm?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got so many things. So I apologize for that.
So that's, that's option three. Option two, or I'm sorry, that, that's, that's option three for purpose of covering those different topics. Then when you move on to what was in our term sheet and what is in their response, this is where we had a section that dealt with the improvements that need to be constructed for, so that the high school project can go forward. What they have proposed is there are a few, I think it's three properties, and I'm, Theron will correct me if I'm wrong, three properties where land still needs to be acquired for purposes of the road construction. And what they are, are stating in their proposal is that the, the city would assume responsibility for the acquisition of land for purpose of the road projects and would pay those costs. And as, as a city staff, we have grave concerns with essentially inserting ourselves into what is what we believe road construction project for the school district. And so we, we don't support the idea of the city inserting itself into the, the school district's process. Now, we have some ideas, you know, depending on the, the direction that the common council would go on that. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I would much rather discuss those in closed session because you really get into negotiation aspects of, well, if you're not gonna do that, are you willing to put money on the table? I, I don't think that we, as a city staff, would necessarily support putting money on the table there, but obviously it's an option that, to be discussed. They, they, they do list some reasons why they believe the city should have responsibility for the acquisition. I, I think this gets to some of the discussion that we had at our last common council meeting. My understanding and having conversations with their attorney and in some of the information that's been shared is that in order for them to acquire property, whether it's through negotiations or through condemnation, they need to obtain that authority through either at their annual meeting or through a special meeting of their electors. And I guess from our, our standpoint, we think, especially when you look at the timing of when this work would need to be done, that there's still time for them to go back to their electors and, and seek that approval. And I, we just, we really don't want to insert ourselves into what we believe is a school district road project.
Mister Touche, you got a question, please?
Yeah, so you're bringing up, so they, they're saying they have to go, when you say go to the electors, you mean referendum, is that correct?
No, it's not, it's not a referendum process. There's certain authorization that can be obtained. School districts have to have an annual meeting, which my experience, and I don't think that they're bound by this, typically occurs in August of each year. I think there, and I do believe that their meeting for annual meeting in twenty seventeen occurred in, in, in August. And, and at that meeting, there's, there's authorization that can be provided to the school board to take certain action. One of them is the acquisition of property. They also have the ability under the statutes to call the special meeting at any time. In other words, they don't have to wait until August of twenty-eight to do, to do that.
Right, so they can have a special meeting?
Correct.
To acquire property?
To obtain the authorization to acquire property.
So I'm thinking of Bishop's Woods. I don't, was that also covered during that? Or Stewart Woods, excuse me, Bishop's Woods, Stewart's Woods. Was that a, a similar process? Cause their land was acquired?
So Adam's wish to run a year, yes.
Okay, so clearly they can do it. So I don't know why the burden falls on the city based on you saying that.
Ms. Doyle, please.
Are we just assuming that's the reasoning for this, or there's obviously representation from the school district here? Is it all right to confirm?
Well, there's, it's, it's in, it's, do you guys have copies of their term sheet? Okay, it's, when you look at the bottom of page two, I'm looking at subsections A and B, and that's, that's the way that they've laid it out.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaskill, please.
Theron, do we have a ballpark cost for that?
Mister Jacobson? Can you use the podium if you want?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. There are no costs, no appraisals, no actual acquisition area that is known at this time. So putting a dollar number with it is premature at this time.
So this is outside of the nine intersections improvements?
It, no, it is with them.
It is with them, okay.
Correct. It's part of the improvement. The additional areas required to construct the improvements necessary.
Mister Diaz, please.
Yeah, this is a question for Mister Jacobs. Can, can we go over how necessary this additional road is related to land acquisition? Is this something that has to happen? Or is this something that could be delayed or even not done?
Mister Jacobson?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. It's a requirement of, per the TIA, the traffic impact analysis that was done. It's part of the overall improvements that are necessary to get traffic in and out of the future high school campus without impacting other operations, you know, emergency, they're on-site, circulation. I believe the connection off of Nine Mound is gonna be the bus exit. I don't know if it's the entrance also, but the school district can confirm or modify that. So yes, it is a requirement.
Further questions? Mister Kleinmeyer?
Excuse me?
Did you have anything else?
Well, I mean, there, there is also, I'm looking at page three of their request on this same topic, their, oh, I'm sorry, page three of their response and a request related to putting certain of these improvements into the new TIF district that's been created, number nine. I think from a, a city staff standpoint, we, first of all, there is no tax increment in TIF nine at this point to pay for such public improvements. And second of all, I, I do believe that if you were to consider that, you would probably need to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, but somebody tell me if I'm correct and correct. I don't think that we have these road projects identified within TIF nine, and so we would need to amend the project plan. And the, the, the last thing I would say is, I mean, you could obviously do it if you wanted to. I think, to me, if, if you were inclined to do something of that nature, that would take us more back to the idea of just, I mean, we don't, city staff doesn't support this idea of, of amending the TIF district to allow for this. If you wanted to go in a direction of that nature, I think the easiest thing to do, in fact, would be to put, just put more money on the table as opposed to dealing with the TIF issues.
Anything else on, on this issue that you wanted to add on? I know Mister Roberts would like to say something. First, go ahead, Theron.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. All talk in regards to the infrastructure improvements for TIF nine. The improvements that are identified in there are intersection improvements up at West Verona Avenue and Legion, and then utility improvements. That is, that is it.
Mister Roberts, if you would. Yes?
Hello, everyone. I'm Noah Roberts, school board president. I just wanted to say that I disagree with the premise behind the city attorney's statements about the city inserting itself into the process. District representatives received explicit instruction from the Public Works Director to not contact the property owners that the road to Nine Mound would go through, and that he would have, he would be the sole negotiator in this process. So I would like to say that the insertion in the process has already occurred, so that saying that you would be inserting yourself is incorrect. You already have, so, thanks.
Go ahead.
Mayor Dister Christensen, Vice President of the School Board. I also wanted to comment that, yes, we can go to a special elector, election to acquire property. However, our electors can also say no. And if that's the case, we don't have the property necessary that has just been identified to us. We knew of the one particular property, but there are two other parcels that we did not know about until Friday. Our electors can say no, and then at that point, we have no recourse. So I think that's something important to consider when putting it to the school board, that we need to take these steps, which again, we were explicitly told not to be taking. So, thank you.
Mister Jacobson?
Thanks, Mister Mayor. That is true. How I stated it was, I would be the first contact to the property owner off of South Nine Mound Road for that property owner, under the understanding that we would be the one, if we were leading the project, we were designing the project, and we were constructing the project. Meaning we, as the city of Verona, not the Verona area school district. Those directions have changed. So therefore, us not being the main driver, the main reason for the project, that is where the staffing or direction of work not being put on city staff.
If you want to respond, I'm gonna have you come to the podium so people can hear.
I'd just like to say that the, the directions did not include such conditions, and it was made very clear that the Public Works Director would have the only contact with these property owners. these property owners. And if there was a change in direction, it was not clearly communicated to the district.
I was also in that meeting, as was Dr. Gorel and another board member who's sitting here, and I second what Mr. Roberts just said. We were told the only contact, and that is the first we've had any additional clarification on what the thought process was, but that was never communicated to us. So, thank you.
Mr. Diaz, please?
Thank you. I have a question for Brian. I guess how do we, what are, I'm not asking anyone to take a position on it because maybe that will take place in closed session, but what are our options for moving forward so we can get this resolved? Because like, one of, one of my concerns is if we have no idea how much it's cost, it's going to cost, and we were to put money towards it, you know, what's 50% of, we don't know?
Mr. Kleimeyer?
I mean, I have a real difficulty with the way Theron's being treated as part of this entire process. I've sat in meetings. I'm not going to say anything more right now, but I think the timeline that we're putting together is going to ultimately show that the school district made a number of mistakes as it related to what they did maybe at the annual meeting in 2017, and how they were not prepared to address some of these things. And I have a confidence based on what I've seen in this timeline that we're still working on, and it was roughly 18 pages at this point, because we want to be as thorough as possible. And I just think it's not going to do us any good right now to have this back and forth, but I have faith in what's going to happen when the timeline comes out. As opposed, as for solutions, one solution would be to say, look, we'll do this, but whatever we pay for it is going to come off of the four million, because I'm not sure why you would want to add additional costs, especially when they're unknown. I think one of the biggest potential problems for the city being involved in this process is, would you as a city be willing to exercise condemnation of the wordy for, over land that is really related to a school district project? Because if the answer to that question is no, you're not going to exercise condemnation to acquire land from city businesses for a school district project, which would be a reasonable conclusion to reach, now all of a sudden, you're really talking, you know, the property owner's sitting in the catbird seat as to what negotiations are going to be. And so that may double whatever the cost is. But that is an option. That is an option, that the city could, could, could be a part of the process and could agree either just to make the payments, or could say whatever, whatever we pay as part of this acquisition is going to come off of the four million.
Mr. Diaz, does that answer your question?
It does. It kind of spawned another one. So are there any alternatives? Because like, as someone who's said on Public Works, I know how much property acquisitions can cost, even for supposedly really small slices of land. Is there, is there any alternatives to this potential property acquisition?
Well, my, my understanding, and I'm going to, I'm going to speak, and then if somebody else needs to chime in, they can. My understanding is that if this access point is not provided, and now I'm speaking, I believe specifically related to this RF, RVS properties that's identified within paragraph two of their response to the term sheet, if that property is not acquired such that the road does not go through there, that's going to result in additional costs associated with some of the other projects. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that is correct. And I can list those if...
Mr. Diaz? No further? Further questions or comments? Ms. Doyle, please?
Just so we can get into discussing our response to the school district, I will make a motion to convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.85-1E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Gaskill. This requires a roll call vote, and ask the clerk to read the roll, please.
Alder Ricky?
No.
Alder Steiner?
No.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Diaz?
No.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Gaskill?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Linder?
Did I count three noes, is that correct?
Yeah.
Three noes, five ayes, three noes, and we are in closed session at 8:39. Session, Mr. Kleimeyer, please?
So just for the public, for the school board members who are here, and then, so the process that we're going to have, the city staff is going to put together a response to the term sheet that we just received, but I'm, and we'll do that over the next couple of days and get it to the school district, but we're going to highlight, you know, what our position is, working off of, you know, our most recent term sheet and what we received from the school district. So as I had mentioned previously in open session, what the school district said is that it's selecting the city's option three with the change that they had said related to the Urbach Trust property, and effectively, that's what, we're in agreement with that, the city is. And just to, to state, so just looking at what the school district term sheet is, they have, what they've identified as section 1CA, which talks about the payment from the city for four million dollars in installments. That's still going to be the plan. I think we're still going to work off of the schedule that we, we kind of have a specific schedule in our term sheet. We're going to work off that. We will add language, the clarifying language that they have within their term sheet to what our proposal is, because we are not intending to set deadlines for the completion of construction in the schedule that we've identified. Then when it comes to the Sugar Creek property, we do agree that we would acquire it as-is condition. Again, that's going to be a conveyance on or before August 1st of 2021. Again, the acquisition of the Sugar Creek property is part of the four million dollar payments that the, the city would make under its schedule, though we are, we are willing to, what's going to have to happen here when it comes to the Urbach Trust property is, we are willing to essentially act as the bank on this $500,000. And so the proposal from the school district that an additional $500,000 installment payment would be paid to the school district on or before August 1st, 2020, we're going to, we're going to work towards that, and we agree, agree in concept with that. What we need to do is, we need to sit down as a city, and we need to talk to the Urbach Trust property and the people who control that, because we're going to have to work out an agreement with them that's going to talk about essentially, when are we going to be able to recoup that $500,000 based on the fact that the payment that we're making for the road improvements are actually benefiting that property? So conceptually, we agree with this. We're going to move forward, working with the school district and with the Urbach Trust property on attaining that, that separate agreement, which then would allow the additional $500,000 payment, so now we're at $4.5 million to the, to the school district. So that's effectively what is, what was our option three as amended by their proposal. What we had in our term sheet was a paragraph two regarding, or section two regarding improvements. They made a counterproposal for section two. We are staying with our proposal. We believe, well, I'm just going to leave it at that. We're going to stay with our proposal for paragraph two. When it comes to section three, four, and five, we think, we think we're essentially there. Section three deals with city fees, and I think as, as a council, how you want us to approach this, and as a staff, as we're going to approach this, is typically when we have a development agreement, we identify that, you know, the type of fees that have to be paid, and then the estimated cost for those fees. And I think what we're going to propose is to get into that type of detail at this point, which would be, you know, we're talking about a term sheet right now, reach agreement on the term sheet, we're ultimately going to lead to an agreement between the city and the school district. An exhibit to that agreement, like we have exhibits to our development agreements, would be, okay, let's identify what these fees are going to be and identify what the estimated costs are going to be. Just like a developer would have the ability to ultimately challenge a fee if they think, you know, let's say we estimated it at $500,000, and now it turns out to be 1.25 million, a developer would have the ability to come back to the city and say, hey, what happened here on that? The school district is going to have the same right. So I think we're effectively in the same spot, but we want to get a little bit more detail on what the fees are going to be so everyone has a realistic expectation of what they are going to be moving forward. Another potential exhibit to the, the agreement would be related to section four, because I think that we're essentially saying the same thing. We agree, you know, part of the language that the school district has in their section four is, this is at the end, "The school district must retain control over scheduling of use of its grounds and facilities at all times." We agree with that, and we think that that's what the current practice is right now. We don't think that we need a specific use agreement that deals with public access, but we do want to have some language in the agreement that deals with it. And one way that we think that we can do that is basically just have an exhibit to the agreement that says, hey, this is how the properties are being used at this point. The expectation is that we're going to continue similar use in the future, again, knowing that the school district is going to retain control over the scheduling and use of its grounds, just as it does now. And so I think that's the approach that we'd like to take to there. The last comment is on the section five, which is a certified survey map. All of the language that they've identified in their proposal is acceptable to us, so I think what we would do is we would just, and we don't believe that it's inconsistent with what we've said and what we proposed in our section five of our term sheet, so basically, we can just incorporate that language. So that, that's what the city staff will be working on, based on, obviously, the discussion that we had in open session and then in closed session.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So with that, we are on agenda item 12B, discussion and possible action regarding selection of a city council representative to the Plan Commission. Do we have any nominations? Mr. Diaz, please?
I nominate Alder Gaskill.
Alder Gaskill has been nominated. Do we have any other nominations? Have any other nominations? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to cast unanimous ballot for Sarah Gaskill on the Plan Commission. I'm sorry? But not unanimous, okay. All right? Do we, we will have, we only have one nomination. So we should have a motion. Right? We should have a motion. Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
I will make a motion to appoint or select Alder Gaskill as the city council representative to the Plan Commission.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with one no vote. Sarah, congratulations. We are on new business, discussion and possible action regarding approval of operator licenses. Ms. Clark, please?
Thank you. I have operator license applications for Ashley A. Schaefer for Sugar River Pizza, Holly A. Schwichtenberg for Tide House, Patricia Alsberger, and Callie Collins for Fisher King Winery.
You've heard the applicants. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gaskill. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Ms. Clark, anything else from you? Then a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.